It's Saturday.
Uh, no ma'am. That's what I say.
You say Christmas baking. Krispy, crispy baking.
For ten dollars, I get twenty dollars worth of baking.
Oh.
Easy. To sing is over there, they're rubbing chili bacon. We want Christmas.
Right. Well, this ain't right, though. That ain't.
Ten dollars.
What's today? The nine?
It's this Friday.
Yeah.
It's this Friday.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh.
Twelve.
Yeah.
That's right. That's right.
Good evening. It is now six oh four P M.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee William.
Here.
Trustee Jacob Bell. Trustee Foulter. Trustee Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Brooks. Mary Kay.
I am present, Madam Clerk. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stand one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Are there any general public comments regarding any items on the agenda? It looks like we only got twenty people, thirty, forty, fifty people, okay? No questions this morning? Thank you.
Thank you, residents.
All right. New business and ordinance levying taxes for the general corporate and special purposes for the fiscal year beginning the first of May two thousand and twenty-five and ending the April the thirty of two thousand and twenty-six for the village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties. Is there a motion, please?
Shall move.
Moved by Louis. Second by Bell Jenkins. Songy Bell Jenkins. Roll call, please. Question, Madam, uh, Thompson?
So. For the levy, let's make the announcement, right? Make the announcement. But see, we didn't have a public hearing.
All right, anything else? Trustee Foulter?
So, did we pass the Treasuries Report? I said, did we pass the Treasuries Report? From my understanding, we've always voted on the Treasuries Report. Before we did the levy. Before the levy was voted on. The Treasuries Report was, was, um, presented to the board and the board reviewed it and voted on it. So you submitted it already? When was it published? So for this, for our levy, it was, it's an increase of two point two five percent.
So in twenty-four, the board passed a levy of ten point three million dollars. Will County's extension, you guys are, your levy is split between Will County and Cook County. The majority is when Will County, which equates to ten point one million dollars. So the, when we calculate what the increase percentage is, it's taking what the Will County extension is. That is not what shows up on people's tax bills. They show up the combination of Will and Cook, but because we need to use one of the two for the math calculation, we always use Will because that's the greater percentage. The true increase in the tax levy comparatively to what you guys approved in twenty-four is point seven two percent, which equates to about seventy-five thousand dollar of an increase for what you guys approved in two thousand and twenty-four. So your guys' levy in twenty-four went from ten million three hundred thousand to what we're suggesting for two thousand and twenty-five of ten million three hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, which equates to about a twenty dollar, twenty-five dollar increase in an average property tax bill. That's, uh, the home is valued at sixty-seven thousand.
Right. So, so a majority of this, the tax levy, about, I think it was like twenty-seven percent of it is taking care of the pension, correct?
That sounds right.
So twenty-six, twenty-seven percent is of the tax revenue that we, we're receiving in based off of this levy is covering for the police and fire pension in I M R F, which is a big percentage.
Yes.
So with that big percentages, do we have any type of reserves or any type of leeway just in case there's emergencies or different things to happen?
Yes. Your guys' revenue stream is not just your guys' property. You also have what you guys make from all your interstate revenues, your licenses, your permits, your interest income. All of those items are cumulatively your overall revenue stream. So nothing in this levy is going to, from what I'm seeing right now, going to be that you guys don't, you aren't going to have any reserves based on what you currently have.
Do we have any type of pension policy or some type of plan, five-year, ten-year? Because we should be knowing, because to me, a third of what we are asking for for tax levy is, is a lot to go to a pension. It's not going toward like the general expenses and different things like that. It's going toward pensions. So what is the progression? Because if it's an increase for this year, what would it be for next year? What are we trying to make up for? Is there, is there a policy out there as a plan?
There, so under state statutes, the village has an obligation that by two thousand and forty, it needs to fund ninety percent of the prior year pension costs. That pension cost is increasing year over year. You will notice that in the pension re, actuarial evaluation, you guys are consistently increasing in what your pension funds are asking you guys. For police, you guys went from nine hundred and two thousand to nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. For fire, you guys went from eight hundred and seventy-three thousand to a million, uh, in pension contribution. It is constantly increasing because of the cost of your guys' pension fund. That is just the nature of the pension. The pensions are across the state, becoming a greater and greater portion of local governments funding are going to fund their pensions comparatively to overall operations. It's just the nature because of the cost of pensions in themselves. The pension funds, they, the way they're calculated by the actuary, that is just the nature of how these are going.
Right, I understand. I just, that's why I wanted to know if they're like a five-year, ten-year plan that we can see like this year, based off of the pensions, this is supposed to be an increase of this, in, increase of this. Is there anything out there that the village has in place that talks about what their projection would be from the next five or ten years?
No.
To, to meet that ninety, twenty ninety, what's that, twenty ninety?
Twenty forty.
Huh?
Twenty forty.
Twenty forty. Twenty forty timeframe.
So what I'm suggesting for all you is to meet, to get to one hundred percent funded. The twenty forty by, uh, ninety percent by twenty forty, that's what's classified under as the statutory minimum. But all of, all of both sets of these numbers are all aligned on what does the actuary calculate as the li, as the funding necessary and what is the pension fund investment return? If the pension fund does well, then the overall contributions go down because a greater portion of the investment returns reduces that overall liability. If we go in the opposite direction where the pension, the pension fund investment returns go negative, then your contribution requirement is going to go up because then the actuary is going to estimate that the overall liability is going to increase because what they're saying is you're going to get investment returns is going to go down. As such, you'll, as the employer, will need to fund a greater portion of the overall pension liability. So it all depends on what ultimately becomes the pension liability and how the actuaries are determining what that liability is and what they, what they determine as to they're going to need to get to twenty, to a hu, ninety, a hundred percent funded. So we as the village have no control over those numbers. Besides, the only aspect where you guys have control is in relation to the annual salary for the police or firefighter, but that's based on your guys' contract. So once you guys have your union contract, that basically determines that. Who, how many employees you have on both police and fire pension. So those are the real, to the extent that you guys have control over what this liability is. Beyond that, it's all controlled by what the state determines as, um, classified as pensions. And then, um, how the actuaries determine what your guys' contribution is going to be. There's nothing that you as a village can do to plan what your guys' contributions are going to be over the next five years, to the extent of however the investment goes.
Right, but it still was determined that we decided, it was decided to pay more into the pensions this year because we do, we, it receives the TIF five
Yes.
money. So it's not like that we had to pay twenty-seven percent, asking for twenty-seven percent, but we're doing it because you want it, we're wanting to pay more into it because of the money that we have received in.
Yes, that and then the fact that you pay more money in, the hope is that they will reduce the overall pension liability in turn reducing the interest costs you guys are paying.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, yes, uh, Mayor and, uh, Board of Trustees. Now, I apologize for the tardiness. Uh, Santa Claus was late getting my hat cleaned. Um, I just, uh, I just wanted to make sure, uh, Chris, was it, is it conveyed though? Is it aware that the, are the board members aware? Because I know, uh, although my training for being on the pension board for Country Club Hills, my first official training is next week, but are we, is the board of members aware that, that the pensions are no longer, at least for police officers, there's several different pension plans? Did we, did we explain that? Did we kind of get that so the board members know it's not like the same like it used to be? Did anybody know that?
I can explain it.
Yeah, if, if you could, because I know, um, Treasurer, uh, Steve Burris was at, um, our pension board meeting last, uh, Tuesday and I think, uh, we voted to, I think it was at least about two million, two million. I know we have our contributions, um, and I, I haven't gotten a chance and that was something that I kind of wanted to convey to, uh, Manager Scott and, uh, you as well, that, uh, we probably want to keep our eyeball. I know some towns do things different, but in reference to the amount of contributions when it comes to matching and making sure that the police department do their part, their pension do their part. Um, because yeah, Treasurer Burris was there when we, uh, gave our report and I think, if I'm not mistaken, he was like about two million that we were becoming, but the projections, I think we also use the same firm, the, uh, the, the police, their police department and our police department, pension, uh, use the same firm. And they give us some great analysis. And if we can, if they can get that to you, I think that would also help, especially when it comes to the questions that, uh, Trustee Foulter had. Um, from what I'm seeing, the late, the projections that the state has been doing so far, it looks good compared to when towns were doing it on our own. And that's one thing that at least our pension board had said that, you know, it looks good. And I made it clear that, hey, when I go back to my board, I'm gonna kind of convey that if, if, if everything is going just like it should, the investments, the contribution, everything should look a little bit better for all of us as, you know, since the state has taken over. You know, fire department, I don't think, they have nothing to worry about. As, as I was saying, fire department, they always stick together. Policemen, I'm, I'm trying to be nice because it's Christmas, but we can be greedy. And we had several different pension funds. Some were doing good, some were doing bad, but ever since the state has taken and make it as one pool, the, the returns from the stock market and everything has looked better. So I, if we can get that projec, if you can see, if you all can get those projections, I hope it's the same because if it's the same, it's a better look for us
Right.
as a board on our portion of what we got to give.
So, under state law, a few years back, um, the state eliminated the authority of each of the pension funds to separately invest their funds. The law required that all municipal funds within the state of Illinois, except Chicago, are required to consolidate all of their investment authority into one consolidated fund. The police have their own consolidated fund, the fire has their own consolidated fund. What they are required to do under that is now one collective board of both police and fire separately, they handle the investment, uh, authority for all of the police pension funds and all of the fire pension funds. What that in turn, the, the logic behind it when the state passed that law was that the cumulative power of one large fund for both police and fire would be able to get larger investment returns because I M R F has a similar process and I M R F has been consistently getting higher returns than each individual pension fund was getting on its own. The logic was that if the police and fire did the same thing, they would get higher investment returns and as such, the overall pension cost would go down because they have higher investment returns. And it would also eliminate repetitive auditing, uh, administrative costs that are being incurred. So the way the process is now is the police pension fund and the fire pension fund have, each have their own consolidate and then each respective local government's proportioning the amount of that weighted investment is allocated those returns. So if, let's say it's a hundred million dollars to make the math easy, U P is a million, they get one percent of the hundred million dollars of whatever investment returns, whatever cost, et cetera. So that is what is being calculated. Now, the way your guys' pension funds work is you guys, the consolidated funds for each, they calculate, they have their own actuarial evaluation that is performed, that calculate, here's what is the pension liability and here's what each local government should contribute. Then you as U P have your own calculation as to what is your guys' contribution should be. Each fund is doing their own and so is the consolidated fund. The logic behind having two sets of actuarial reports is that the actuary report under the village's portion, you have more current real-to-date data comparative to the consolidated fund, which only has the cumulative of what is provided where you guys as a pension fund here in this village, you guys have up-to-date data because you guys can easily compile that information and provide it to the pension fund where the consolidated fund, they get it more as after the fact. Um, the pension fund consolidated, they offer monthly reports that are of the entire fund as a whole. And then each of the pension funds, they can request their individual proportion of mon, monthly. But that is, the pension fund can ask that for that information? Now, you can request that through either FOIA or just by openly asking them, but the pension fund does have the option to obtain their monthly report as to what's the proportion of the investment value that of the total consolidated fund corresponds to each of the individual investments. I have seen from some of my other clients that depending on the month and the market as a whole, they are tending to do better than what they were doing previously.
Any more, any more questions, guys? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vote aye.
Vote aye.
Vote aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item is item E one B, which is a motion approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for property casualty and workers' compensation insurance by Insure Source. Is there a motion? Moved by Trustee Brooks. There's a second by Trustee Songy Bell. Questions, anybody? Roll call, please. Pardon me? Madam, uh, Manager, trustees want to know if you have the numbers as of yet. Insure Source. Those are the numbers. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Any question, uh?
So this is just for the risk management, correct? Property and casualty and the workers' comp. Okay. So the deductible of the five hundred thousand, correct?
Let me, I'll have to pull that information up for you. So give me a minute. I'll have to pull up, but I sent, you guys should have it from the last board meeting, but give me a minute to pull it up because it's different deductibles for different line.
Now, this is for the text.
So it was in the packet?
I see.
Cliff gave us a package.
It's too many people with their mics on.
Oh, a half a million dollars.
Just the one, so it's not, you don't have the information for all the different ones? Or is it just for the?
No, because he, he doesn't sit down and meet with me, so I, I don't know. This is what was given to me two days prior and told to sign it. I forwarded to the attorney.
But normally, um, it would be presented and discussed, um, typically a hundred, a hu, a hundred and eighty days out, the broker meets with you, so, um, I don't have a lot of answers for you. My apologies.
Just a minute. I just. Manager Scott, the deductible of
Put it down.
Okay, now it's on. In the deductible agreement that was sent in the packet, it referenced, um, Illinois Public Risk Fund. Is that part of Insure Source? Okay.
Yes, and the deductible amount here, it says is a half a million dollars that the board approved.
Right, I was just trying to clarify Illinois Public Risk Fund and Insure Source. Okay. Okay. Okay, that that answers, that answers.
It deals with like police chase, something like that, dealing with police, maybe fire, but as far as the everyday, day-to-day, we've never met the threshold. It seems like it's gone up now, so that's where we're at.
Okay.
But, but it's five hundred is too, I don't think this is what, because this is just for the Illinois Public Risk Fund. I thought it was another type of fund as well.
Because we used to have.
This is what I received today from Cliff. Was it yesterday or this morning? So I couldn't put it in the board packet. Um, but this is, I guess, his presentation. We're going to see a twenty-two percent premium increase. This is on the first page of the presentation. Says, uh, we continue to be fortunate with our partner, Fortston Insurance, uh, will hold the online current retention of a hundred thousand. If no changes are made, the village will see a twenty-two percent premium increase. We're also showing a higher retention option of a hundred and seventy-five, which has gone up, which is also an eleven percent increase.
So can, um, can we, can we hold on?
So it says additional savings are available if the village considered even higher retention options, but I don't know because I, I didn't get a chance to meet with them. I don't know what the options are. I don't feel comfortable giving you an opinion.
So, so.
But it has just gone up a little bit. It's gone up eleven percent and that's the increase, um, for the higher retention option and it says a twenty-two percent premium increase overall.
So I would like to, can we come back to this agenda item?
We cannot.
Motion to move it because he's been here these past several, four or five weeks.
The deadline is
I'm not, I'm not saying to, tomorrow. I'm saying today. I'm saying, can we come back and we can move on to the next items? And then if we, seven o'clock, because normally we have the meetings at seven o'clock. So I don't know if the time is off, but he has been showing up at these past couple meetings. So I'm not sure what have happened because we don't have a packet
I understand.
and you're reading the packet. So I'm just asking if the board, if we can move this one down to
Let's just move on.
to the under.
We can, but at this point, we kind of, we have to just move forward. I mean, the
We got a motion and a second on the floor and everything.
Yeah, but it's still questions. I just want to still see if the person comes in because you received the packet, like you said, but we have not read it. And I can't, uh,
He did say he was bringing the packet. I did send him an email about the board meeting. He did not, I also called him. I have proof that I called him. I emailed him. He did not respond to me until, uh, Monday saying, sorry, I just saw this. Yes, I'll be at the meeting. So he is aware I did tell him.
So Mayor, so my underst, so I could just give the understanding to Mrs. Scott. Only thing, Ms. Scott, I was just trying to see, um, usually on there, I was trying to see which insurance companies, this, uh, yeah, I was I was trying to see which insurance companies, you know, was, was just going to keep us. That, that was the purpose of that. It was, it was not to raise any, any questions or doubt because if it's the same companies, I just felt complacent that they feel comfortable with University Park. That's, that was the only reason for that question. Because I, right, because I know the deadline is here.
Yeah.
Right.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. Roll call.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Foulter.
I'm saying.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Vote aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
I can turn the raised that motion carries.
All right, motion carries. So Cliff is in. All right. Item EC, a motion authorizing the extension of the boundary for TIF 7 to include the following parcels identified by Penn, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 PIN numbers. Is there a motion?
So move.
Move by Louis. There's a second.
Second.
Second by Williams. Yes, ma'am?
Is that bad? That's better. Okay. So, um, I was looking at this extension of TIF 7, and from what I read from the IML, there's no such thing as an extension of a TIF. Um, you have to start all over, which means you have to have public hearings, review board hearings, where concerned stakeholders could have a say. Uh, we have to give notices to the county and other taxing bodies. So, do we have any of these things?
Uh, Trustee Thompson, you might be right in some of those aspects, but I don't think that we have to do. I'm quite sure we've gone, everything has gone through the TIF attorney, which is a fifty-year expert, Mr. Murphy. So I'm quite sure we're very good at moving this. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So we should know whether or not we had a public hearing that we didn't know about, or review board hearing, or the stakeholders, um, you know, have something to say about it. Is the county notified, the other taxing bodies? Because at the library, we didn't know. So, um-
All the qualifications have been met.
Do you have documentation of it?
Uh, Mr. Good is here himself.
No, I'm asking you, the mayor and the village manager.
Do you have documentation of those docu-, of those items that you asked?
It's not extension of the TIF. The extension of the boundary lines just to incorporate across the street. And I did bring TIF 5. This was done with TIF 5, and I have the similar, um, and I did bring the documentation, the exact ones that were done with TIF 5, and I suggest that we do this similar to the, the exact documentation that was done with TIF 5 when they did that. And that was back in 2000 and, the beginning of two, the two thousands.
So TIF 5 was extended?
I believe a boundary was, and it's in here.
Did they have public hearings?
I wasn't here at that time, but I don't believe-
Is it in that packet?
I don't believe-
No, there was not a public hearing when we expounded, when we did that. I was here then. There was not a public hearing. Again, it was just, it's stretching it out and not changing any of the facts, the dollars amount, and everybody. It's just expanding the boundaries. So that didn't justify for a public hearing.
Well, according to the IML, you have to start like from the beginning.
You don't actually have to start from the very beginning to extend the boundaries of a TIF.
You have to have public hearings, though.
There are some things that have to be done. I'm pulling it up for you right now in our database to see exactly what was done, and I'll get it to you.
Ma'am, may I be recognized? Yeah, so my only thing with this is, um, is procedure-wise, um, yes, when we did TIF 7, that was in, uh, 2017. Um, so, um, if I remember correctly before we do this, is that, um, I don't know even if it was, uh, Trustee Jenkins Bell said that we needed to have a workshop on this because, one, was that it was supposed to be, again, there was a procedure when it came to the TIF, the TIF boundaries being expanded, that the top, the taxing bodies were supposed to be notified. Then there was supposed to be also a, uh, public hearing on it, and actually even when it came to it, um, a joint meeting of those taxing bodies. And all these things were done when we first, uh, formed the TIF. So in this, in this is, I'm not objecting what someone want to do. More, mine is more of procedure at this point, uh, because I did take a look in reference to, uh, residential zone right across from industrial zone, and that there are places such like that. Now, the reason why I said is that, um, though, especially those residents, especially those hearings, this should be done because even when we put up the steel company, I mean, no one really have a, had a voice in that, uh, although it was legal because it was within the TIF itself. But one thing I want to do is make sure that everything is followed because I was told that to some point that, um, if it was to go, that it can be, uh, rejected, uh, when filed down in Will County. Uh, the other part, portion was, is that when it's speaking about the taxing bodies receiving their portion, their portion, uh, such as the school and as well as the schools, the library, and those other bodies, that when we talking about the splitting of, uh, those funds and so forth, that we're still going off the old TIF agreement that was originally passed when TIF 7 was formed. So mine is more procedural. Uh, I thought we would go along with Trustee Jenkins Bell had recommended when she said to tape, that we were going to table it to the workshop in which she was going along the line of it, and then we move forward. I know Mark Good had spoke about it at the-
Town Hall.
Town Hall, um, which, you know, I won't, I want to say is that we were beginning the right path, but the path that we are taking right now, um, I mean, it is, you know, it, it is not exactly, uh, what was, what we were supposed to do and actually the process itself. So-
All right. So if I may, um, very good questions, trustees. As I'm looking at it now, this is just a motion authorizing the extension. It's not the, uh, formal adoption of it. It's not the ordinance that you all are passing now, which that comes at a later step. So this step is what happens before all the things you all kind of talked about. So, good question, good point.
Okay. This is from the IML. It says, um, "A public hearing must be held where the residents and other interested parties can express their thoughts on the subject. If the plan for redevelopment is approved by the joint review board," which that's all the taxing bodies and residents and whoever, everybody that's interested, "the municipality may adopt the plan by a majority vote, vote of the corporate authorities. If the joint review board rejects the plan for redevelopment, then the municipality may proceed, but the plan must be approved by three-fifths vote of the corporate authorities. Then the mayor can sign the ordinance into law."
So, so Trustee Thompson, that, that's good, but that's only if we're recreating a new TIF. This one is expired. We're initiating a new one. This doesn't happen, redevelopment agreements don't happen until the property is already encapsulated. So we haven't gone to that step yet.
And there will have to be a public hearing.
It will.
To be clear. It's just later.
To all the taxing bodies. No, no. I understand what you're saying. No, this, this is actually the first step. This is the first step. Then the next step goes when it comes to the redevelopment agreement. Then all the taxing bodies, the public hearing, and as Trustee Brooks will see, then the procedural things will take place. But nothing procedural can take place until this is actually in our community. So that's what we're asking for your support on.
And, and that's what Trustee Jenkins was really saying.
Um-
Don, Trustee Foulter, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So this is, again, this has been presented numerous of times. This is where we're extending the TIF. You, the request is to extend the TIF across the street from Cicero, um, to, on Cicero across. So that was something that we were saying that we did not, I was saying, and other residents were stating that they did not want the TIF to be expanded because they did not want those industrial buildings to be there. It's the same plan, trying to revert it a different type of way, but it's the same thing. Um, with this, it was supposed to be a workshop. That's what was the last time that it was presented on the, the agenda, and the board tabled it to go into a workshop, and it was recommended by Trustee Jenkins to have a workshop where the residents would be able to put, to give their opinion because as stated, that a lot of the residents did not want to have, have the warehouses on that other side of the street. They did not want to have it extended, nor did we want to have to pay the developer, Mr. Good, to use, to have him use the TIF money that's already in there to build that road. We were stating that that road, which is Stega Road, the extension of that can be done by them if they wanted to. It didn't benefit, it's not something that was going to help with traffic or anything like that. It has nothing to do with traffic. It was just, only thing is to build that road so they can continue to start to have the development over there.
Actually, it's housing and retail.
It's, it's potential. It's potential, potential housing or retail that is being presented, but nothing has been, has been talked about or stated.
To cure the debate then, I just, just take the votes. For those who want to see that opportunity so we can start a redevelopment agreement instead of going back and forth, we've all understood our pleasures and our comments and everything. Let's just take a vote. Let's move it on from there.
Which is, that's what I was stating. We, we went through this several times before. So you're just saying, let's take the vote. I'm stating what I felt like state, stating is insane, is that this is the same thing that's being represented, just in a different way to say, oh, we just extended the TIF. No, it's extending the TIF to say, okay, we're going to put warehouses on the other side of Cicero, which is extending the TIF, which it does create a brand-new TIF. Just extend, extending it is not just an extension of it. It's a creating a new TIF. So it's for them to use the money that we already have that's in the TIF fund, the incremental funds, to have them build a wa-, a, a road that is not needed for us as of right now. So again, the residents did not have any input on what is going to be actually developed over there, nor the board. We, we're talking about it, but as in a whole joint conversation, that has not happened.
All right. Thank you. Trustee, uh, Jenkins Bell, then we go to Manager Scott, then we go call for the vote.
Uh, yeah.
Trustee Jenkins Bell.
Yeah. Um, I did ask for a workshop, and the workshop, I think, was held, not a necessarily formal workshop, but we did discuss this in a town meeting, the town hall meeting in great detail. Now, my question is, is this, when you look around in the Southland area and you are watching these other communities begin growth and development, when do we start? That's the question. The question is, we have to be ready, not getting ready. So my thing is, is that we need to make sure that we're making these decisions that are going to be impactful for the community, not just a few. And so we have a lot of young families that are moving out here with their children. They want to work close to home. They want, they want housing. We have to be prepared. If you're not going and cruising through the other neighborhoods, Tinley Park, for instance, Moni, for instance, they're building, 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 Applebee's, all of these different things are coming into their community. And they are not being like this because they're ready to see growth and development. That is what our job is. We have to do what's best in the best interest of this community, and that means that we have to steamroll this village forward because standard steel is not going to get us anywhere. So we have to be supportive of things that are necessary. Now, if this is not the final vote, and this is just the beginning, and it's the, the start of this situation, we have to start somewhere. And it's time to start somewhere and do it with someone that's been dealing with our community for years. But we have to also make sure that these developers that are coming into our community that are, that they're going to invest in our community with community incentivized benefits. So we're not going to keep just giving away things and not getting things in return when it comes to our community. We have a whole park district that is getting ready to be formed. We have to think outside the box. We have to put on our thinking hats and start thinking growth, development. We want to be able to pu-, push our taxes down. This is the start of that. So we have to get in the game. We cannot keep sitting on the sidelines.
Also, uh, ma'am, may I be recognized? Mr. Good did say at the town hall meeting, if we were looking for residential and retail, he was willing to speak, would, would do that, right? Was, that's exactly what he said. If we want retail and residential, we don't have to build a spec building. He said that if this is what the community want, retail and residential, he's down for that. And he said, we don't, he don't have to pay for the road. We can pay for our own road. Did you not state that, Mr. Good? Yeah, come to the mic.
So, so yes, we, we have, we have, we have land designated for retail, land resident, designated for residential, and land res-, designated for industrial. And, and, and we were only offering to build a road because we thought you didn't want to build a road. So if the village wants to build a road and use those funds, we're totally happy with that. We don't have to build a road at all. We're happy that the village would build it and build it at your pace if that's what you want to do. We were only offering to do it, um, because we didn't think you wanted to. So we're okay with that, no problem. And we're okay with designating some of our land for multifamily, some for retail, and some for industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
So to piggyback, what he, what, uh, Mark Good was saying, it does say in there that he would build it out. We don't have to do that. I don't suggest. I think we should explore options into doing that ourselves. The other thing I wanted to mention was we, when we did have that meeting at the, uh, in Vegas, I did talk to those people who are developing in, in, uh, Huntsville, Alabama, and they have a whole community. They're, they're building around a school and a hospital. They were interested. The, um, acreage that they were looking for was a little under what Mark Good had. The other thing I wanted to mention, when you look at the cost of the permits and the land he's donating, it totals over $6 million. Those, uh, those, uh, the land that he's donating to us, we can do what we want with it. The other thing is, we can also carve out what it looks like for his community benefits agreement. I think he should have a community benefits agreement like the other people did. And those are things that we can carve out. This is just an agreeance to move forward. At any point, when it comes to the agreement, all of that stuff, it does have to come back, uh, through the board every last bit of it.
All right.
Mayor, point of clarification.
Go ahead, uh, Brooks.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing, I, I, like I said, this is, my question was more procedural, but I just, I'm hearing, and it says a motion to authorize the extension of the boundary for TIF 7 to include the partial, and it has the partial numbers. But in our packet, I don't know, I'm not seeing the resolution, but I am seeing what Venture One is asking. And it did say that it wanted to expand TIF 7. East, it's on page five, it spans east Cicero, Cicero. Uh, yeah, to Venture Park 71 in the, uh, or I guess the, uh, Theater Corporation land. Okay. And then two, it says Venture Park 57 will construct the infrastructure for Stega Road extension from Cicero to Governor's Highway. Um, they just spoke about that. And then Venture 57 will receive all available proceeds from the extension and expanded TIF 7 area until the cost of the in-, infrastructure is paid in full. I, I just have a slight problem with number three. And then Venture Set, uh, 57 and University Park will execute a development agreement in which to memorialize this plan, in which Mr. Good has been good on that. Uh, the only thing I, I disagree was the years, the years. Remember, we had our 1723 one, but that's okay, Mr. Good. We, we agreed on at least one thing out of 10 years. Remember, we had our seventeen twenty-three one, but that's okay, Mr. Good. We, we agreed on at least one thing out of ten years. Yeah, that was the only thing I really fault, fault.
That's monumental.
You, you working on me. We, we getting there, we getting there. Um, so my point is, mayor, is that, um, um, I, to get, I'm just saying, on my vote, I'm hearing what you're saying. This is a motion to authorize, but I don't want to make that mistake because I'm not seeing everything. Yeah, I'm not seeing everything as far as procedural-wise, because I honestly thought that we were going to take this to a workshop or a hearing and do it the same way we did before, when, uh, Mark Good first came to the twenty-seventeen, twenty-nineteen board and we formed TIF seven. So that, that's my only objection. Unless someone can show me where I can read it, I didn't see it.
So I, just to kind of answer your question and be clear, the next steps is to go to the joint review board and to ultimately have public hearings on the expansion of the TIF.
And work on that redevelopment.
You have to take the, uh, proposal first, and you, the board has to approve that, and that's step one. If you all don't want to do that, then
Then it's just, oh, no.
There's no point to go to that step.
So this would, this would be for the village itself to say, we're moving forward with this?
It's not necessarily moving forward. It's saying, it's just your intention that you're willing to explore more so. But it's still a lot of steps. And ultimately, when you vote for the ordinance, you know, that's the final.
Then that's the final, finalization of it. Trustee Thompson? It, it's, I understand what you're saying. It might not spell it out in language, language, but the intention is, the way this language works, it's all a proposal. Until there's a redevelopment agreement agreed to on the board and everything is, all right, here we go.
Attorney, can, can, can you at least put that in writing for me so that I will feel comfortable knowing what I'm, when I decide for this?
Yeah, I could send you a memo, just as I did with other things.
Right, right.
For sure.
Right, because I, I, Madam Clark, you remember how we did seven, and this is, this is a little, we keep, I keep feeling like, even with the eight, TIF, TIF eight, I just always feel that something is backwards. I'm trying something new here, and I don't feel like, I just feel like we putting the cart before the horse, and something doesn't fit. You were there when we fought because it was you, the village attorney, and, you know, uh, so, I mean, I'm not getting that same feeling like we did before. So that's why I'm like a little, I'm sorry, ma'am, I just feel confused. It's like something seems off.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know what I mean?
I got you, I got you.
Creation of a new TIF is slightly different than an expansion. So maybe that's why it feels a little different.
Because that's when they created it in seventeen, if I'm not mistaken.
You have certain studies that go in place well before you even get to this point when you're creating a new TIF.
Yeah. All right, Madam Clark, roll call, please.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Vote aye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Vote aye.
Trustee Folcher.
Vote no.
I'm sorry, trustee Folcher, I didn't get you. I didn't get you.
Vote no.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote no.
Trustee Brooks.
Could I pass for the mayor? Or he's the final vote. Vote no.
Mayor Ruth Eds.
Votes aye for economic development. Thank you guys who support that. You guys get an opportunity to come back at the next meeting as we move forward. Thank you so much for your support. Let's move on with our bills payable. Good evening, Mr. Taylor. How are you, sir? We passed your agendas on item as well. All right. Attached for your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the Villages of University Park that occurred on November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five through December ninth, twenty-twenty-five. General fund, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and four ninety. Road and bridge, eleven thousand, four sixty-six and thirty-four. Town center fund, twenty-one thousand, nine seventeen and eighty-eight. University golf club, twenty-eight thousand, ninety-four and eighteen cent. TIF five, four thousand, two seventy-seven and fifty, and the payroll fund of six thousand, two thirty-seven and seventy-seven, with a grand total of four twenty-three, ninety-eight, and fifty-seven. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second. Questions? Just use your outside voice.
So check number fourteen-two-eight-three, Amber Mechanical. Is, which, which HVAC system was this one? Because I know the other one for the police department was a lot. This one was seventeen-five-five-oh.
I believe it was the fire department. Am I correct, Chief Staganga? I'm trying to remember which one that was. Give me a minute to look it up. That's for the town center. That's for the town center. We had a broken, the HVAC system was broken. So each one of the units, the reason why this, 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 uh, town center is, is quite costly is it has very old HVAC systems. So each one has its own system. So as they break, we have to replace them, and there was no heat or anything in the unit.
So that's just for one?
Yes, ma'am.
That's it, ma'am, for me.
Ms. Scott, is, uh, the soccer training, I seen it was two different names. Is that, that's just a program we have? Okay, it's two. I just noticed, so we just, we'll just grab whoever. Okay, yeah, because I just noticed it was just two different names. Um, and the conspiracy group, the fifty-two thousand, how many months is that? Okay. Okay, uh-oh. And, um, the other part, Ms. Scott, um, the salt, uh, we, we did our bid already, right? I, I had not seen it. Um, are we gonna use the salt more with the, the, Chris, what you call that blue, cor- corse? Cor- corse, corse? Okay. Oh, Brian? Okay, okay. Okay, yeah, no, I was just checking, Ms. Scott, if we were gonna use the fancy stuff. The pretty, the blue, blue, I call it blue salt. But yeah, and I, I thank Chris, I thank Chris, Chris took care of me. Yeah, so thank you, Chris. So, all right, that's it for me.
Folcher. I have question for check number one-one-four-three-two-five, the industrial chem labs, vehicle wash. What was that for? Because I didn't see a, um, receipt where it itemized what it was for. I'm just not sure what it, vehicle wash is for. Is that one of you outside department?
Yes, that was, uh, that was the vehicle wash that was on back order, and it barely got processed just because it was on back order with the company. That's actual vehicle wash for all the vehicles, for all our, for all our pile vehicles, for all our general use vehicles. It's a wash and wax. Um, the issue was that we were going to Menards and spending a, a hefty amount of money, constantly purchasing car wash, car wash, car wash this year, actually saving us money. Reason being is, um, we actually have to dilute it, and one gallon of that actually makes, I think about, they stated, if I'm not mistaken, twenty gallons of actual car wash. Um, and it was a box, and the box came with eight of them.
Oh, okay, so it's some type of solution that was purchased to wash the vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, next is the restore construction, the boardups. So I see that there was some boardups for the same location, the same day, different receipts. What was that for? Why is it too different? And there was two, um, two homes that was boarded up? One-one-four-three-six-zero. So it had two addresses, and it had two different bills for the exact same day of service.
So the police department, we boarded up one home, um, that was open and hazardous, and that we received, uh, quite a few, um, complaints from citizens. It appears that the homeowner, uh, just up and left, and left the home and left, uh, left it open to the, uh, to the elements.
Right, but it's two different invoices for the same day and two different prices, and it's in here somewhere.
Yeah, also, uh, Public Works did contact, uh, the boardup company in regards to, it was three homes. One was on Old, sorry, one was on Union, one was on, I believe, Brockhurst, Brockhurst Court, and then the other one was the one that's on Sullivan.